Everybody, my name is Art Whitman. I'm chairman of the Shafter's Select Board. We'd like to call this meeting of the Select Board to order on Monday, December 20th, 2021 at 6:30. Would ask the members of the board if there's any conflict of interest. Is anything shown on the agenda?
No.
Nope.
No.
Okay. The next is we have minutes to approve. I'm looking at December 6th. Present myself, Kenny, Tony, and Mike. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Tony, second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so carried 4-0-0. Okay, warrants. First, we have a payroll warrant. Thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-two cents.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, so carried 4-0-0. Next, we have a warrant number 20 for eighty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Tony, second by Mike. I will read off some of the items more than a thousand dollars. Okay, Appalachia's salt, five thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Hopefully, that fills up the bin. G.A. Bowe Fuels for eleven hundred and sixteen hundred and another sixteen hundred dollars. Goldstone Architecture, they designed the platform for the transfer station, twenty-six hundred dollars. North Bennington Water Department, this was the payment for the water that the... This is for everybody. This is the residents' everything right.
Is this the entire bill?
The entire bill. Thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Sullivan Powers for nineteen hundred dollars. You still have... Is this to TAM or is this to... You still have it for TAM.
No, that's to SELL.
Yeah, okay. Eighty-five hundred dollars for the transfer station. And William E. Daley, seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, probably for gravel.
Yeah, that's most of what's in SELL.
Winter sand. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried 4-0-0. The next one is a check warrant for number 21. This is for all of the community appropriations that was voted on by the voters last year or last...
Last March.
Last March, this March of this year, which the taxes that just came in fulfill these obligations. And so it is for a total of... Is there a total someplace? Eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Entertained a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Tony, second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, carried 4-0-0. I have a payroll seventeen A... Or not payroll, check warrant seventeen A for an overpayment of property taxes for one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carried 4-0-0. And I have a payroll warrant number 12, which says adjusted. What is this for, Dave?
Hey, what happened to the system where you put out a check for Ken Coonrad when he had already left a week before him?
So this...
After crediting us back.
This is... Okay, I'll sign that one. So we have a credit of three hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents. Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carried 4-0-0. Next, under announcements. As you know, this business of the spread of COVID, the new variants and all that sort of stuff is coming upon us and we have to decide what we're going to do, whether we're going to have an in-person town meeting or Australian ballot. And this cannot be decided by us. It has to be decided by the state legislation. I asked Dave Durfee to come in and give his take on it, what might happen, and so on and so forth. If you would, please, because the mic is there, Dave.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And yes, as Art said, the legislature would need to pass a law to change the current statute to permit select boards or other municipal bodies to, in this particular case, have an Australian ballot or delay town meetings, another option. It's essentially the same thing that happened last year, if you remember. And that... I look back to see how it worked last year. There was action on the very first day of the legislature, which is the first Tuesday in January. It took about two weeks for it to go through. There wasn't any particular effort to hurry it up. I think we were conscious of the fact that there was a deadline, but it wasn't dealt with in a day on an emergency basis. So it's hard to say how it might transpire this year, but I would say that two weeks is sort of the longest that it might take for the legislature to act and for the governor to sign it, because ultimately, that has to happen too. So anticipating that right now, it looks very similar to last year. I believe the draft legislation would do essentially what happened last year to then. You would have the option of taking either of those steps if you chose to do so. And it would also allow you to direct a clerk, allow select boards to direct the clerk to mail out a ballot to everyone. I think that's what the Select Board did last year in Shafter's.
It did.
Yeah. So that's my understanding, anyway. I should say that the legislature is not in session, so we can't do this right now. And it won't be in session until January 4th, 3rd, 4th, one of those early days in January.
Are there only two options to have an Australian ballot or to have the town meeting postponed? You can't... Nobody can have it on town meeting day?
No, I think that you would still be able to have it on town meeting day. So this wouldn't prohibit that.
Okay.
It would give you the flexibility of either doing that or... Which is currently the way that we would... I think Shafter's would have to have it on town meeting day absent some other change.
Okay.
But could still have it on town meeting day if you chose to do that.
The problem is is that we have to make a decision by January 24th like that? Because that's when the ballots have to go to the printer. Everything has to be checked out. Would have to go to the printer.
Right.
And that sort of stuff. So obviously, we can't decide or we aren't going to decide tonight. But I wanted to make the public aware and looking for public input. I mean, there is a possibility... The school has come back and said we can have it in the gymnasium, which you could kind of spread things out. We could also have it in the town garage, which is quite large. And the acoustics are terrible, though. Or we can have another Australian ballot. So I really am looking for public input on this as to what... And you probably would like to hear what the public has to say about it too.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. So the... I think that there's a statutory deadline, which may be a little bit later, towards the end of January. But from a practical standpoint, if you're going to print ballots and mail them these days, it can take forever.
It could take.
Yeah.
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 But you got any questions or comments?
No, I think soon, the better.
I think last year also, there was a Zoom broadcast of a... Not the actual town meeting, but a hearing.
A presentation.
Public information.
Yeah.
Tim Skoggins went through, talked about the budget, all that sort of stuff.
Which you could do. Obviously, you could do that if you wanted, but that wouldn't be... But there's no... I should just be clear, there's no provision for having an election over Zoom.
Voting.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
One more second.
Yep. Okay, thank you. That's...
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments. You're on the agenda, so... And nobody's on the screen?
No one's on the...
Okay.
Well, nobody's commenting.
Okay. Melanie, Treasurers Report, please.
I only made three copies. I don't know what I was thinking, but it's really boring, so...
No, thank you.
That ought to be enough.
Tony can have it. He's a senior.
I'll give you the boring reserve fund one minute.
Okay. Tony can get the reserve fund.
Thank you.
Let's look at the cash flow first. Let's see, we got a lot of income from cemetery. I think it was going back a while, so they've been catching up. The delinquent taxes, you see, there's over thirty thousand in delinquent taxes. That's that first big tranche that comes through with the people who just forgot. So that's the easy money Mark makes in the beginning of the collection period. We're still looking quite a bit better than last year in terms of delinquent taxes. But not dramatically so. This is about an average year. And last year was a slightly below average year. Clerk revenue, you can see that that's a backlog, too. I think that we hadn't processed it for a while. So more than eight thousand dollars in clerk revenue came through. And if you look down under dispersments, you see that half of that or half going backaways went to the Restoration Reserve Account. That's something that we're obligated now to put that money aside. Under payrolls, you see that adjustment that you just signed. That was just an error on the payroll company's side. So they made us hold the three hundred and sixteen dollars. And I didn't know how to have you handle it, but that's why you had that strange warrant. We want to look at the reserves. Only two things were happening this past month, or I mean, so far this month. And that's the big amount of water payments came through. And the other thing is that Restoration Fund at Fund 350 down there. You see, that's the only other activity in the reserve account so far this month. We just got the final report from... Oh, sorry, any questions about any of those reports? We just got the final report from Sullivan Powers, right, Dave?
Yes.
Had a chance to look at it yet? It's...
Yeah, and I sent it around for the work.
Oh, you did, okay. So you saw that that's come through and there weren't any surprises, which is always good. Let's see. Trying to think of other things that happened at the end of the year. You already signed the publicly... Public voted transfer... I mean, the transfers and also the money to the voter-approved.
Community appropriations.
Community appropriations, thank you very much. So that's what I'm going to be busy with between now and Christmas. And then probably, it's going to be a little dead here next week. But that's what's going on in my department. Any questions about anything?
There was one large delinquent tax bill that got settled somewhat unexpectedly. Was that in 2021 or was that 2020?
The... I'm sorry.
Wasn't there one large, like, long-term delinquent tax bill that got settled somewhere in the last few months?
Down here on the corner.
On the corner here.
Yes.
I was just wondering where that... What year that fell in?
Yes. I think that was since it was for very many years.
You're right, okay. Oh, so it falls into each.
It was a big chunk of money, but it didn't substantially reduce our burden for any given year.
Got you, okay.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Yep. Next on the agenda is the community appropriations. We asked the people that were having an increase in their appropriations or new ones to come in and talk to us about what they were asking and why they were asking. So...
Just to be clear with the seniors, this is a petition to go on. So she's really here to explain what it is. She's going on the ballot.
You've done your due diligence with...
Yes, I'm here to job.
Thank you.
My name is Kate O'Kline. Retired teacher from the area. And I participate a lot with the Senior Center for several years now. And it's a wonderful place. And if you've ever been, never been there, it's really a gold nugget that we have in Bennington. And there's several Shafter's people that do use it. A couple of years ago, there was talk about having a membership fee for members, for people outside of the Bennington area, since Bennington totally funds the Bennington Senior Center. And I and some people were concerned that there were some Shafter's people that live on a very limited income. It doesn't matter how minimal the membership would be, that maybe they would not become a member. So I looked into it a couple of years ago. I never really followed through. And this year, I said, you know, I'm going to do it. So I found out how to get it put onto the March ballot. Did talk to many people. And it was quite interesting how many people in this area don't even know about the Bennington Senior Center. So I've been, since then, leaving newsletters downstairs. So anyone that comes in, they would find out. The teacher, the retired teachers, we get together once a month and the Bennington Senior Center always lets them know what's going on, different trips. We go on very large trips. We go on small trips. There's something happening every day at the Center, Monday through Friday. A newsletter does go out every two months. We're talking about our next big trip would be Kentucky in the spring. My husband and I went to Costa Rica through a Bennington Senior Center put-together trip. And then there's little trips like, let's just go over and go to Falls Diner in Hoosier Falls. People get together and they play cards. And they play bingo, which is the most popular thing at the Bennington Senior Center. If you're a bingo player, that's where they are. And I think the main thing about the center is accountability. People were very concerned during COVID because as it is now, if you're in bone builders and Mary Sue's not there, it's like, wait a minute, Mary Sue lives alone and she's in Shafter's. Someone checks on her. There's that keeping track of some of the elderly people who maybe don't have family around. So we did open up quite quickly as soon as we could as far as the center, because that is an important part of the center. At times, we had people come in and, you know, take care of people's feet, blood pressure. A lot of those things have not since happened since COVID because it's hard to get nurses and stuff to come in. But it is a real special place. So when they started talking about memberships, I was a little bit concerned. So I thought, well, you know what? Shafter's should pay their fair share. We are invited to go there. And Tom Jacobs, when he was the lawyer for the... And on the Board of Selectmen, he said, you know, we will never... Everyone will always be able to use the Bennington Senior Center and we will promise that there'll never be a membership. That could change. People change. And there's talk about maybe moving the Bennington Senior Center. So before any of that happens, I thought, you know what? It's time Shafter's actually puts a minimal amount, nominal amount into the budget so that we are paying our fair share and to make sure that there's never really a membership. So if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
What is the amount of the membership you're asking?
Seven hundred and... Oh, the membership they never really went into.
Okay, but you're asking us?
Seven hundred and fifty dollars. We thought that was... What we did is we looked at other allocations, like the agent for the agent of the agent, RSVP, other places. And so we went very small amount. It would go towards an activities fund. So... And we're really trying to promote the center because so many people don't know that it's there. I couldn't believe how many people, like I said, at the dump. They said, where is it? What is it? And so we're trying to advertise more so we can get more of the out of Bennington people to participate. I get real tired of meeting people and they say there's nothing to do in town.
Okay.
Okay. Let's go have lunch, play some bingo, maybe learn how to sew. I learned how to play ukulele while I was there. And there's an array of things to do. There's no reason for someone to stay home, be lonely, and complain.
Okay.
The bus will even come and pick you up. And I do know people in Shafter's that the Green Mountain Bus comes and picks them up to bring them down to the center.
Where is it located? Is it like near the old Stark Firehouse?
It is. The old Stark Firehouse. Your belly's down.
Okay.
And then there's the Woolamasek Apartments. It's right in front of there. The first floor is Meals and Wheels, so they have a cafe there.
Okay, yeah.
And then the second floor is the Senior Center.
Got you, okay. My grandmother, I think, spent some time there back when she was... And that allowed my mother to continue working. It was definitely a help for our family.
Yeah. And it's not just... It's actually for anyone 55 or over. So we do have some people on disability that come and participate. We'd love to have more men participation because it seems like, you know, the exercise classes are only women. But that's a whole nother subject.
Do you overlap with AARP?
Not really. There's, I think, the only overlap with agent of the agent.
Right.
Is we can do bone builders because they sponsor it. We are not allowed to do any activities that would conflict with the Rec Center. Like we used to have Silver Sneakers perform.
Yeah.
Now that the Rec Center has kind of taken over the Silver Sneakers, we can have bone builders because they don't have bone builders. But there's no overlap between AARP as far as I know.
And the Council on the Aging?
Which is on Benmont.
It's a different...
It is totally different.
And that's... I didn't realize they had moved back down, but they were in Rutland only, weren't they? And they sort of...
They've been around here for a while. They are in the Mace Building, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's... They don't have activities, per se. They would advise you when you get onto Medicare.
Yeah.
They can give you, get you equipment if you need it. They have totally different... This is more social and community, the Senior Center.
And Project Independence on Harwood Hill? That's totally another.
That's a totally different thing. That's actually a private-owned, isn't it?
I don't...
I don't know what...
I think it's mostly infirmed elderly.
Yeah.
And it's a daycare.
It's... You've got your grant, you've got your parents living at home. You want a break, you bring them there for the day so you can go out shopping. So it is, it's more of a daycare. Whereas the Senior Center is more that we have an elevator and people come in wheelchairs and walkers to do bone builders. So it's the gamut. But then you've got people out there walking and... It really...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I am going to continue making sure that the newsletter...
That's a great idea.
Gets downstairs. One's going to be sent to the office every time. I asked her and Carrie hadn't finished the January, February so that I could have them for tonight. So that's why you got an old one.
That's all right.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nicole Campbell of Shire Kids. She's on Zoom here.
Okay.
They're looking for a $250 increase from 500 to 750.
Yes, Nicole?
Hi, thank you for having me. So I run Shire Kids. We are the local affiliate for Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. So the program is a book gifting program that mails a new book to enrolled children every month from when they're enrolled, which is ideally as close to birth as possible until the child's fifth birthday. So the books show up in the mail every month. It's an exciting time for kids. And so we... Shire Kids is the local affiliate for all of Bennington County and Danby, but specific to Shafter's. We've served in day 21. We have 55 enrolled Shafter's children. And just for a reference on cost, the cost to Shire Kids for each child enrolled is approximately $25, $26 per child per year. So with Shafter's enrollment going from, I think, just over 40 last year to over 50 this year, that's a total cost to Shire Kids of closer to $1,400 now. That's... That's where I, what I was thinking of when I increased that app to the town. To help defray the cost of providing the books to Shaftery children. And also for reference, in Shaftery total, based on, I think it was 2019 census data is the most recent. Number I have for that age group, there were a total of 171 children in Shaftery under five. So the point of the program is to create the shared experience of literacy and books in the home. And like love of reading at a really early age. So we're always trying to enroll as many children as possible. The books are free to the families enrolled. So this is, there is no cost to the families that are in it. So if we do get close to enrolling the full Shaftery population of children under five. That 171 children at $25 per child, it would be over $4,000. So just wanted to give you like a reference of where Shire Kids costs are for serving Shaftery. And then to put that in perspective of the amount that we gratefully received last year, $500. Thank you so much for supporting us in the first year that we applied and for the new amount that we requested. So I want to be respectful of your time. Are there any questions about Shire Kids or the Imagination Library that I can clarify?
Nicole, how do you enroll children?
We have an enrollment network primarily of pediatricians, preschools and social care workers. They are the ones that are on the ground and working directly with families every day. And have our enrollment forms that they share with the families. They tell them about the program. You know, a lot of times I hear from families that they'll be at their pediatrician's one day and at their school the next day. And everyone's asking them, have you signed up? Have you signed up yet? So the, you know, the pediatricians and the teachers and social care workers are all very enthusiastic about this program. So I hope, you know, between one of these avenues, we are trying to reach as many families as possible. Pediatric dentists is another one. Libraries also have information on it. But the most success we've had is from, so the forms then come back to me. So I draw up this data management administrative work. So the pediatricians will then send those forms to me to do the enrollment. And the bulk of what I receive is from Children's Integrated Services, SBMC pediatricians. And then other, other practice pediatricians like Dr. Orton and Dr. Miller and some of the bigger ones.
I'm all set. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless. They're asking for increases from 1,000 to 5,000. We have Chloe Beiner Collins. I hope I got that right.
You got it.
Yeah.
Thank you for having me and thank you for your support in past years. So I'm just going to give a brief overview of the shelters and the services that we offer. Benny County, Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless is the only shelter serving all of Bennington County. So we have two shelters. One of our shelters is an adult shelter. It's located on Main Street in Bennington. We have 16 beds. We're full. Our other shelter is a family shelter on Pleasant Street where we have nine apartment units, which are also totally full. So we have 17 kids right now. We also offer drop-in services. So anyone who just needs food, clothing, to take a shower, warm up. They can come by the shelter and get those things. I don't know how much you all know about the numbers in Bennington County. But we also have 166 people staying in local motels put up by Economic Services who are also homeless. And there is no one to service all those people with case management except our one organization. So we, I have been personally driving to motels to bring people food who aren't able to get to the food resources. Because there are a lot of barriers. I also had a meeting today with Green Mountain Transit to try to come up with a specific route to help people who are homeless get food services. But as you can see, there's a significant need for these services. Our shelters are full. When the state stops doing the voucher program at the end of March. There's going to be 170 homeless people in Bennington County with nowhere to go. That is why I'm asking for an increase in funding to try to continue to try to meet the need as really the only homeless shelters that operate in the entire county. We do have people at our shelters who are from Shaftery. So we do serve your town and your area. And we offer a wide range of services. We help connect people to veteran services if they're veterans. Connect them to, help them apply for food stamps, any benefits that might be helpful. We also help with finding apartments. As I'm sure you know, it's really difficult right now, which means we're able to serve less people. Because instead of just staying three months and then getting housing, people are staying a year longer. Because there's such a lack of affordable housing. Especially if you're working full-time at the store or the Dollar Tree, it's really hard for our guests to afford apartment units. So a combination of lack of affordable housing and the fact that the motel voucher program will be ending. And I'm trying to support all these people in motels is why I'm asking for the increase in funding. To better meet the needs of all the homeless in Shaftery and surrounding towns. And I am happy to answer any and all questions about our shelters and the services that we provide.
Do you ask Bennington's community appropriations for money and how much?
Yes, Bennington is our largest. Pretty much all towns give us around 1,000 to 3,000. Bennington gives us much more. I'd have to pull it up, but I think it's 32,000 a year. So they are our largest contributor of all local towns, but we do serve all the local towns.
Thank you.
Chloe, what's your, you had that one day a year count. What was that count last year?
What, what count are you asking for?
The homeless count. Isn't there a day in January where we do a homeless count statewide?
I'm not sure to be honest. I'm fairly new to this rule.
Okay.
I don't know what the state count is. I do know how many people we have in the county who are homeless right now, who are in motels. And then I know there are a lot of folks camping who aren't being captured in that number. I'm not sure of the January date. I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, okay. Is there anybody going around to the motels and inspecting them?
Inspecting the homeless people who are put up in hotels?
The rooms, the rooms themselves?
No.
No, okay.
No, but Economic Services is paying to put people in those rooms. So they pay for damages if there are any.
Yeah, I'm talking about the motel owners and their responsibility for damages.
No, and I will tell you that a lot of the motels, when I call and try to place someone, because we recently had an outbreak. And I was supposed to put close contacts who were not positive in motels. A lot of motels won't take people if they know that they're homeless. There's a lot of housing. Basically, you know, people are afraid of that. So I actually have a really hard time finding motel rooms for guests when it's outside of Economic Services doing it. Economic Services has specific agreements with each motel or hotel that they place people in. There are actually 10, I believe, in Bennington County right now that have boats. Because there are 166 people in those motels. When it's our specific guests that we're putting up in motels, we're going daily to check in with them and provide them food. So we can kind of keep an eye on them. But when it's the over 160 people through Economic Services, we don't have the bandwidth to provide that level of management.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
All right. Our community appropriations policy is not clear. It's not, hasn't really been updated. Our policy so far has been that once you put in a petition and are approved by the people, by the voters. You pretty much are on every year. And if you want more money, you just kind of say, I want some more money. And we do not have a good policy again of how much somebody can increase and so on and so forth. This is going to be our project for next year. We're going to have to do something. In the meantime, we have to wrestle with this question. Do we give all of these people that ask for an increase their increase and so on and so forth? It is a big number. It's be close to $90,000.
94,000. It's up from, I'm sorry, I lost the page. But community appropriations are up 149% over the last four or five years. And it is because we lack any, any policy at all on how to improve it. Last year was 87, 9, 10. This year, I think the approval will be 93,575. Which is about two and a quarter cents on the tax bill on the community appropriations. And that might not sound like a lot, but actually it's only like 48 cents. So it kind of is a fortune of it. It's actually the same size as our capital improvement money for the highway. So it's just something that the vast before and I think we need to address a policy. So that we have an equal ground for everybody moving forward here. There's a ton of models out there. Most towns are kind of back and forth, kind of like we are. Which isn't the greatest way to address things when you have multiple requests for increase. So the VLCT model would just have, if you want an increase over the prior years, you would have to do a petition. Just like the original petition. And then they also recommend that every three years, every group submit a new petition. Just so, there's groups on ours that have been there for quite a long time. And it's not really judgmental on whether any of these are worthwhile. It's just that we have no written policy, which, when we do have questions about what we're doing. We're kind of stuck with no guidelines for it. It makes it hard for the board to decide, I think, because we don't have any policy. It's always been just kind of, well, let's do this and that every year.
My concern is the number keeps growing really fast. And it's gotten so easy that somebody can just say, well, I want another $4,000 or something like that.
It was only a few years ago we were at $60,000. And now we're at 93.
And just to remind everybody that the amount is added to the tax bill.
Yes.
It's not part of the budget. It is not the, in the budget that is voted on. And this is extra.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Sometimes when you give the number as to what your taxes are going to increase, we do, and we do use that number.
Yeah, I roll it in. When we do the budget planning, I have to put it in. Because otherwise people are going to be very upset when they have another two and a half cents on their tax bill.
The voters have the option of going down through and saying yes or no on each one. But I've never, very seldom do I ever see anything get voted down.
We had a couple of years back, there was one that they voted down, which, I mean, to me, that was like, whoa. People actually read as they go along each item, which is great.
And there are a lot of them now.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's a long list that we see people being less willing to read through them all.
Yeah, well, I just, the thing we just signed, there must have been over.
25?
Oh, no, there's over 30 or 40.
Yeah, I think it's like 25.
Yeah, it's only about 25.
On a ballot, that's quite a lot.
Okay, we really, to have a discussion, we should have a motion. And to have a motion, most motions should be made in affirmative as opposed to negative. So I think that to have a discussion, we really should make a motion.
So what are we voting?
Voting to, I think the way it should be put is that the vote would be to approve all of the community appropriations that have been presented to us, okay?
Okay, I'll do that. So we'll make a motion to approve all of the community appropriations for the coming year.
That have been, that have been presented to us.
I'll second.
Okay, have a seat. Now we're open for discussion.
Okay.
I don't think we should be picking and choosing between them. I think we either got to approve them all. Or at least, or deny all the increases. So it's just a big number. That's my concern.
Yeah.
They all have compelling stories too.
Yeah, yeah.
Tony, your opinion, Mike?
Yeah, I agree. It's hard to pick and choose. And I think if we're going to address this in the coming year, maybe, you know, we have an opportunity to tighten up the ship, so to speak. Going forward, I know it's kind of a big hit this year on something that's been increasing. But inflation's up. I mean, we heard the libraries trying to, we heard about the projects they're trying to complete here. And I know the Senior Center has been a help to my family. Homelessness in Vermont is a huge problem trying to find housing. I know several people have been trying to find housing. And frankly, a lot of the housing problems in Vermont are of Vermont's own making with a lot of the zoning. I mean, it's a, it's a long topic, but it's a problem to some degree of our own making. So to have to chip in to help with it, I feel like it's something we kind of have to do. If we're gonna, if we're gonna make it very difficult to build housing, then we're gonna have to find somewhere to put people other than in tents in the middle of winter in Vermont. It's, it's rough out there. And even for people who are full-time with relatively decent jobs, it's still almost impossible to find a decent apartment right now, or any apartment. So, sorry to go off on a rant there, but I think I'd be in favor of approving these this year. And taking a closer look going forward when we have some guidelines to follow.
Tony?
Yeah, I agree. I think if we work on a policy for the coming years. I wanted to ask, Jen, you had increased your request substantially. What were you going to use that increase for?
So basically, it was to put us in the black. For some time, the library had been running, it had been running, I'm sorry, it had been dipping into its endowment to cover operating expenses precisely because, one, we ramped up fundraising to do our bit on it, quite a bit. But also because we had not historically asked for increases to keep up with inflation, to keep up with new collections, with new demands that have been put on the building and on the building in some ways. So that was the reasoning behind that was just like, oh, we haven't done this in so long. And the, the policy that the trustees had adopted was to just use the principle of the endowment rather than just the interest to prevent, you know, making waves or something of that nature, taking it to the public. And we're on much firmer footing now. We're in a sustainable place right now. So it has helped and we've, oh gosh, doubled our fundraising easily since I began as director. So we're doing our bit too.
So your allotment is going from what to what for us?
I believe it was an increase of 1,200 for the year ahead at 5%, which is, we're trying to keep up with inflation. And we took it easy on Shaftery with the percentage increase we're asking from each of the three municipalities that support the library. And last year we did do level funding. And we're still, we're looking at, oh, well, there's a cost increase. And, or, you know, you won't get the same discount on books this year, sorry. That sort of thing. I'm like, okay, so do we decrease the number of books we purchase? Or what do we do? Or the cost of fuel?
Thank you.
Joe, do you have any questions, comments or concerns?
Well, I guess if I have any questions, I'm kind of curious. This is a question from Ms. Collins. The average age of the homeless people, what is that?
Well, there's a wide range because we have our family shelters. We have 17 kids there right now. And they range from three months to 17. And then in terms of adults at our family shelter, there is just a total range. We have senior citizens who are getting meals on wheels there. And we have people who are in their twenties. We don't take anyone under 18 at our adult shelter.
Okay, so, so the other question is, are these people working?
Yes, over half of them are working.
That's where, yeah, that's where I was going with that, because I, I mean, I know it's, it's really tough out there.
I have guests, I have one in particular who I can think of who works two or three jobs, and he still can't afford a apartment in Bennington, or find one that he can afford. There's also a lot of other barriers that this population faces in addition to, you know, finding the housing, one bad landlord reference, one bad criminal reference check, any of those things will render them ineligible. And most of people who struggle with homelessness have a wide range of barriers, including mental health and substance abuse, at least a lot of them do. So, that can make it even harder, because one bad landlord reference will make them unable to find an apartment. But I'd say right now, over half of the people at our adult shelter work full-time.
So, the jobs just aren't paying enough, or?
Yes, and then they also, either the jobs don't pay enough for an apartment, they can't get enough good credit or enough good landlord references to get an apartment, there's just too many barriers, and, and a lot of them have mental health issues, or they're on social security disability, and that isn't enough to afford an apartment. There are a lot of barriers in, in all of Vermont, as, as one of you pointed out earlier, but homeless numbers are growing, especially since COVID hit, and, you know, there's just a lot of different challenges. Whether or not people are working doesn't seem to make or break whether or not they can find housing.
Well, if they're working, and they're working a good-paying job, they should be able to find housing somewhere.
Not in Bennington, and not, if you're working full-time at Walmart, you can't afford twelve hundred, one bedroom.
I agree, there's nothing, there's nothing in Bennington. But the thing is, as well, there, there's a lot of jobs out there, and there's some good-paying jobs if they look towards Troy.
Um, so there's a lot, I think there's a lot of barriers. You know, most of them don't have transportation, so how are they going to commute to a faraway job? Most of them have their support network here, so if they're struggling with daily doses of methadone or something else, they have to be in town. If they have a medical care provider, they're going to want to be close to their provider. I mean, there's a reason why they're in Bennington. Either their support network is here, their job is here, and working full-time at the job that they're capable of getting, because a lot of them do struggle with a lot of different barriers, Walmart, you know, the dollar store, it's simply not enough for an apartment.
Okay, I understand.
I, I guess one comment I've got, would like to make, is that when, when you approve this on the, on your ballot, you aren't getting any tax deduction. If you really want to support some of these things, you could write a check to each of them, and because they're nonprofits, you would get a tax deduction. By just clicking it off on the ballot, you are not getting any tax deduction. So, it's just a, just a point. So, so I, any other comments or anything? I guess we've got to bring it to a vote. Tony?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Yeah, aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Also in favor, so carried four zero zero. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you for your support.
Next on the agenda is the budget. Listen to Joe first, from the fire department. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you. And just for, especially if you go on CAT, and the people who are on Zoom, unfortunately, there's a glitch in my computer, so I cannot share any part of the budget on screen. We spent an hour fixing this this morning, and it doesn't work now. This will be a little bit difficult for those who don't have faith in a lot of them. These things happen with technology.
Come on up, come on up, Joe, and sit in the hot seat here.
And Joe, I was not able to share the information this morning neither.
Okay, I got it here, and you can just discuss it. The budget overall is pretty much the same as last year. I didn't see a need to raise it for any particular item. But we have an idea that we'd like to present to the board, a proposal, and we need to get consensus if the board thinks that this is a good way to go, and then we'll take it a little bit further. Basically, I'll just read this to you. We're asking the select board to consider next year's budget ATV four-wheelers side-by-side on a trailer. This unit will be used for search and rescue, weather-related issues, and also would be available to the town forest fire wardens during fire seasons, fall and spring. Across this vehicle will go places where conventional vehicles like our own pickup trucks can't go, or our brush truck. If we had a tropical storm like Irene, we could use it on roads. We do have, every once in a while, we're asked to do search and rescue in various parts of Shatsbury. We have a lot of woods and mountains, and we also cover glossary, which is quite extensive. As I said, this is something we've kind of thought about for years and years, but it was always something more important, you know, furnace for the firehouse, or a roof, or.
Or your F-tenes.
Yeah, SCBA's. And it's my contention, and my belief, that we can do it within our budget. Our equipment fund is at twenty thousand dollars for our request, and this side-by-side with a trailer would cost us between fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars. I have gotten prices, so I kind of know what I'm talking about, but I would get absolute quotes, you know, when the time comes, if this is what, what we all decide that we want to do. I don't see, I don't want to raise any taxes to try to cover this, so if, say, next year, next fall, when we're ready to start pricing this out and buy it, something happens, it can always be put off into the year. You know, if we lose a bunch of gear, or, you know, something happens with, you know, the equipment of the trucks, we replace that with equipment fund, and we'll deal with this some other time. But I would like to get it, like, towards the middle of the fiscal year, so that we know that things are in pretty good shape, and not strap us with a big-ticket item like this, because obviously, it's going to take up most of our budget. And then, as far as, you know, this fire truck sinking fund, we have a plan for that, so that's kind of set. The SCBA's, we have a plan for that, that's kind of set. Utilities are what they are, and Dave will take care of that, that part of it. But the ATV was something that we wanted to propose to you tonight, and see if we can get a general consensus. And I welcome any thoughts, any ideas. I'm just. I think as long as they do it with their own budget.
You always do it right, Joe. Yeah, no, you always do it right.
If, if it's within your budget.
Yeah.
I don't, you, you.
Perfect.
You get the right one, and do what you want to.
Yeah.
You don't need our approval for that, but I think it's an excellent idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, there have been times when we really could have used it. For some reason, over the last ten years, we've been getting fires on railroad tracks, alongside railroad tracks, and fairly good-sized fires, and you don't want to take a pickup truck on railroad track.
No.
Makes everybody a little bit nervous. It's, it's, it's things like that that, you know, keeps bringing it up to us, and, as I said, we, you know, the select board supported us in getting our facilities up in, you know, top-notch shape, and, and our gear is in great shape.
Always is.
And now, we're, we're attacking the SCBA's, I think this is our next step.
Okay, got you.
Got any comments?
Not about that, I was wondering, how's your general staffing? You have a good crew, or?
We actually just got two volunteers this past week, past two weeks, which, one was someone who returning to the department, and a new member, so that's kind of nice. It doesn't happen too often, too.
Yeah, a lot of people don't realize how important, people don't realize how important volunteer fire departments are until they're not.
Yeah, you got a great bunch of guys, and, and, you know, some of us have been around for forty-five years, and some have been around for seventy years. So, you know, we seem to hang out to 'em, so we're really lucky that way.
You're lucky. Thank you for doing that.
Good leadership, I can tell you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, Joe, the line item will, will stay the same?
Stay the same, it starts like the same.
Yeah, it's, ours has the same.
Yep. And we'll talk next, next fall.
Good.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Dave, would you just soon, we waited to vote on the budget?
I think because of this failure of being presented, it'd be best if we waited till the seventeenth.
Yeah.
And we've gone through the basics. Rejection is slightly ahead of last year, with some adjustments I made today, so the biggest change was last year, we were very strict with the budget, and cut a number of programs, and held the tax increase to one percent, because we were planning this in the height of COVID, we expected it to be in a far different economic landscape than we are now, where we have inflation running around. So, there were a lot of adjustments to get things back up, part of the itching being, we have to remain very competitive to keep our employees. We have a really efficient group of people working here now, and there are a lot of people out there looking for people. And especially with the road crew, we have to remain competitive with B-Trans, that upped all their rates this year. And so, we've taken minor steps, providing a dental plan coming up, a vision plan, and pay raise to keep them competitive with B-Trans. And I know people look, and the listserv, it's called a listserv, of who's looking for what around the state, is populated all the time with towns looking for people. From my personal experience, because I took our new format from B-Trans, people compete with each other to take them with benefits, and we have to keep up. So, that, that's changing the landscape a little bit. The lister's office is changing, or we, our proposal has changed it from elected listers to a assessor's assistant that will be a town employee, and will work with a professional assessor, so that raises that a little bit. Another new thing that we want to implement this year is a proper webmaster who will rebuild our, our website and manage it for us, and that would be, I propose to use one of our current employees, who does that by her profession. She's currently the cemetery superintendent, but she has her own, she actually was the webmaster here for years. Like now, the, the, it's fallen on my part to do updates, because I can do some updates, and looked at learning WordPress, I even bought a book and started the course, and was like, I really don't have time to take a course on how to do this. Our, our person that we want to bring back actually was able to bring the files up out of her archives, and is pretty much ready to make it live as soon as she gets to go ahead, and change it and reformat it, and there's a number of things the prime users here, myself and Marlene, like to see on the website. You know, I have total fine things on sometimes, that's not very good, actually. It's embarrassing when people call, and I go, hold on, I'm going to look myself, it's not good. Other, other changes, small changes, eliminating the contribution for the Veterans Memorial this year, I've been positive with that, and I've been popular veterans, part of rebuilding the exterior of Cole Hall, is expanding the Veterans Park, but I just have enough money in that now that we don't need to do it anymore. Not for this year, cemetery, the same thing, we have quite a lot of money in cemetery that we're going to use on projects, but we just don't need any more this year. Parks, the same thing, we have quite a lot of money in parks, and these are going to be built up. Parks also got a very generous request to work on Howard Park, so we're in good standing with all those. And those are really the major changes, and we're just holding the line on a lot of things. And we've been pretty well-funded all along with keeping up with grants and everything. So, the total amount goes up only a couple of percentage points. The average for a house, the dividend will be point four five nine two to point four eight two, which equates to twenty-two dollars per hundred thousand valuation.
Twenty-two dollars per hundred thousand?
Per hundred thousand valuation. I just give you, in fiscal twenty-one, the increase is twenty-three, so it's actually less than twenty-one. And standard I was like, is we've been running below the inflation rate for the last nine years, and we're even further below it in twenty-three, given wherever that's going. You know, that's, it's taken a long time for us to get back to what we spent in twenty-fourteen, and we're just a wee bit above that now.
So, we'll.
We'll wait.
We'll wait, and you'll be able to have it on the screen hopefully.
Yeah, this is, you can't make a real budget presentation when you can't bring anything up on the screen, when it's twenty-five pages long.
So, you're anticipating this, the seventeenth, January seventeenth?
Yeah, the seventeenth, I mean, I'm ready to go tonight, but I can't present it, so it's, we'll be here the third.
Okay.
But I, I mean, you, you all have copies of this anyway, it's already been sent out. You have it at home, I'll, as soon as I get this to work, I'll send you the updated one. But the good part about the updated one is it's less than the other one you have, so.
Okay.
Oh, the other big change would be, we're taking twenty thousand in revenue out of the unreserved fund balance, because we also, last year, because we ran it so tight, we increased the unreserved fund balance quite a bit, voter approval was up fifteen percent, but I figure we take some of that back and lower the amount of tax to be raised, just kind of give it back.
Okay, we'll move on then. Last meeting, we opened a bid for a culvert we placed at the end of Shatsbury Hollow. That was turned over to Mike to make sure that the specimen, what he specified was covered by the budget.
Yeah, everything, Mike reviewed the budget and just the bid, and just remind people it was for sixty thousand dollars for the Shatsbury Hollow Road Culvert Project, and that was by Weaver Excavation. Mike reviewed this, and it fits our standards and what we need. We want, we're all very aware of Weaver's work, we've worked on a number of projects for the garage, a number of road projects, and on top of that, he was the only bidder, so.
Right.
Entertain a motion to award the.
So, award the.
Contract for Culvert, the Culvert at the Shatsbury Hollow.
Motion.
Weaver.
One second.
Second. Any discussion?
Can I just, where is this one located? Is this the one way, way up?
This is, it's the very end of Shatsbury Hollow.
Like where?
If the culvert's undersized, collapsing, it's kind of been on the agenda for a few years. We finally got funding for it, and A and R's approved it, and everybody else who needed to get an approval, come.
We only got to come up with how much of that sixty thousand?
We need to come up with sixteen thousand, I think it is. Yeah.
Okay.
It's a, it's a usual state, it's, it's eighty-twenty split with all the project.
I was just wondering, I mean, way, way up, there's one that's like, it's exposed, and it's like, not even covered with dirt, is that, it's not that one, is it? I mean, that's like beyond where cars go, and you couldn't get a car past that.
No, this is where the, it's a cul-de-sac, where actually people turn around, a couple trails go off.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is right at the end, though, but yeah, just before the cul-de-sac, that one place is up to the left, but a lot of people go up there, and there's, I don't know what they do up there, but it gets a lot of traffic.
It's, it's kind of a hard pill to swallow, because there's so few people who are going to go over it, but it's, the state says we got to do it.
Yeah, it's collapsing, so we, you know, we have, we have to do it.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those, any further discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried four zero zero. We also opened the bid for cemetery maintenance.
Cemetery, cemetery maintenance and mowing contract was from Sycamore Landscaping, that's Jay Coonran's business. Jay's been doing the cemeteries for years. We discussed this at the cemetery committee last week and approved, but we're in the contract with Jay. It's a three-year contract, there'll be thirty-one, two for each of the years. And we've expanded Jay's role a little bit more, and we'll also have a sixty-five-dollar hourly rate to do other projects that the cemetery committee would like to be done. But he has quite a lot of cemeteries, it's actually quite a lot of work. Jay's been doing it very well for years, and the board recommends awarding this contract. this contract.
You went over it, and everything is...
Yeah.
You're okay with that?
Everything's good.
Is that a motion, Tony?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to award the cemetery, uh, contract. It's for...
Thirty-one thousand two hundred to Jay to Sycamore Landscaping.
But it's for three years with...
It's a one-year, thirty-one-two, if, if we have the option for the following two. We always left an option, and, uh, because a few years back, we had, uh, a not-good experience, let's say, not with this contract, with the different one.
Okay, so, and, and the, the following two years are the same price?
Same price, yeah.
Okay, which is unbelievable.
Yes, so it's frozen for a few years. And I say, this, this is a bit above what, uh, the last contract was, but if you remember, VLCT, uh, changed the rules and made us require all our contractors to have work with comp. A self-employed person normally doesn't have to carry it, and it's a very expensive insurance to have, so we may dig out, so, and made it a requirement of anybody in this bid, so it doesn't knock it up two, three thousand dollars.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 So carried four-zero-zero.
Since we have arrows and emissions from the lister's office, I can just read through these, and then the board will have to sign the appropriate places. We're back.
Yeah.
Uh, number one was a, a owner request that the boundary line change, first two are actually the same thing, uh, switching point-five-one acres between two properties. The, uh, second one is a lawyer made mistake while recording a sale that led to, uh, two acres being added to a property when it, when it was added. That's actually the next two, it's transferring the two acres in one property to the other property. And the third one, the only one that involves any, any money on here is Lake Perrin Village. They were given a ten percent discount applied to municipal tax by mistake by, uh, uh, the lister's office, and that's part of the, there's a whole tax formula for this that they're not eligible for, so the professional assessor corrected this. So what you need is a motion to accept these, and sign by the three listers, and use the board's signature.
This, this goes to the grand list, is that right?
Yes.
These are adjustments...
Well, some of it, there's one that, that is, the family sustained by all, the parcels, uh, land was recorded improperly, those we assigned to correct parcels from that property.
Okay. You've heard the thing, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? So zero, so carried four-zero-zero. I don't see where...
On, on the left side, the top, you just sign down in the row, on the back page, the second page. On, on the right side, I'm sorry, they sign on the left, you sign on the right side.
Yep. Now I see it. Okay.
And I'll move on to the next, uh, topic which we'll just be mining, and we're gonna continue to bring this up until election. Uh, we will have on the, the March ballot, the elimination of the lister's office in accordance with state law, that we will move to a, a professional assessor, and we will have an employee here who will be the assessor's assistant. Uh, the assessor's assistant will provide all the services the current lister's office provides. However, the actual decisions on property valuation will be done by a, a professional that we currently are contracted to, but, uh, we'll take out some intermediaries by having them just work with one person here, employee. It's something that, that most towns in the state are moving to, because the role of assessing properties and keeping the tax rules correct, so we don't do arrows and emissions all the time, uh, is becoming quite difficult. And as the market is exploding left and right, and all the taxes come from, it's, uh, trying to create a lot of issues. So we're just gonna keep, remind people that if people have an opinion or are interested in this, we, we're bringing it up, this is a big change, there's been listers here, like there have been in many towns for many, many years, but, uh, it's just a much more technical profession now that we need, we need. And our, our part is, we pay a professional assessor, uh, so we might as well have someone here who can work as an agent to that person and be more efficient.
Another good point is that that person is here most of the time, so when somebody comes in, wants to see their tax rule, or get into, let their assess that...
Yes. And, yeah, the, the other good part is, the way we're trying to structure it is, that that person will have a dual role in, in town hall, so that, uh, even if they're working in the other position, if someone comes in, we often have people come in wanting something from the lister's office, and there's no, there are no listers here, because they were only working Monday and Wednesday, nine to twelve. Now, essentially, four days a week, if someone just comes in, like many lawyers and researchers do, and asks a question, this person could simply go over and access the files and, and make it much more friendly for the users. It'll, it'll work out a lot better, I believe.
They're basically just a data entry type thing?
No, it's, it's much more than that. It's, it's going to be a very, uh, it's gonna, it covers a lot of roles of listers that, uh, our, our information is the face of the assessor to the community, uh, without the technical end of it actually evaluating the properties. And that protects the town, too, having a professional do it, because when you have appeals, uh, the weight of an assessor who does this, currently our assessor does it in like five, six other towns for this company number, I mean, they have a whole backup. And I like the idea of the court, of the company we're using, because they have multiple assessors working for them. We've had a couple of individual contractors do assessments, but if that person gets sick, like unfortunately one did, we kind of come to a screeching halt, and it's not a good place to be either.
Okay.
All right, then we have...
We're, we're just looking for comments from the public.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, it's gonna be on the ballot, so let's...
All right.
Discuss it, if people have, have input, we'd like to hear it. Then we have the, uh, board term expirations, uh, just put it on the list, because petition time is coming up. At a point in time, we have, uh, two, two positions on the select board, Mr. Whitman and Mr. Harrington, uh, one auditor's position is expiring. Uh, there is a vacancy in the listers, which is kind of interesting, because we have appointed a, a person to fill that vacancy. Uh, they'll also have to run, just in case this is turned down, we still need the rest of those. Uh, there's going to be a open position in the fussy's of public funds, which is also an elected position, and the development review board and the planning commission are always looking for members, so if anyone has any interest, just contact those board members.
But the people looking to be elected by, by ballots have to have a...
Have to have a petition in.
Have to have a petition.
And... Uh, we'll take this one on, I'm like, it's mid-January, no later than mid-January.
Yeah, I think, I think that's right.
Call the town clerk, and she'll tell you the date, and, and give you the petition, because it has to be done the right format.
Yeah, yeah. And because the legislature did not, only gave that exemption for one year, you gotta have thirty signatures.
Yes, you have to go get signatures still. That, that exemption was not renewed this year.
We're down to other business gentlemen and ladies. Anything else?
Anything for me?
Joe, we all set?
All set.
Okay. I guess we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much, everybody.